Thank you.
Can you be in a good position for another video?
Good.
Good morning. Hello.
Can you hear Mandy? Yep, she's on. Mandy, you want to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, it's eight thirty. Do we want to give everyone a couple more minutes? Pam, where are we at on quorum?
I think we're about half, so maybe like another minute.
Okay.
Good morning, Harold reporting in.
Hi, Harold.
Good morning.
Oh, I get to see your face and everything.
Hey, we're up and at it this morning. We're gonna gain another day.
You're looking good.
And you're good looking. That's the only difference.
Harold, could we start every morning with you talking so nicely like that? That's great.
Hey, you think Joanne would stick around for sixty-two years without it?
I don't know. I'll have to tell Scott that one. I'm not greeted that way every morning.
You wouldn't believe it because it's early morning. I, three times a day, I gotta get plugged into my thick line on my, on my chest. And so I had to do it at eight this morning, but I didn't wake up till eight this morning. So I showered and, and got dressed, went out there. We just finished up doing the application. Got to do it three times a day.
Wow.
Eight in the morning, three in the afternoon, eleven at night, and got to do it for, for six, six weeks. Yeah, I think it is. I think we're on the week three, we're starting week four. But anyway, it's a, it's not a pain. It doesn't hurt. Just gotta pump the vials soon.
Sure.
But anyway, so it was a kind of running morning, but Joanne is there to the call.
You sound wonderful. You look good. So there you have it.
There you have it. That's it. That's all you get, Harold.
Well, where are we at with quorum now, Pam?
I think we're good.
Okay. And then we went a whole, one meeting without doing Zoom, so we all have to get back in the practice of, of re-engaging electronically. So we're gonna welcome everyone today to the Thursday, October twenty-second, Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. We have new guidance today that Wayman's gonna read for us, and then we'll get started.
Yes, Madam Chair. Pursuant to state statute fifteen point two, six, three, A, one, A, the Kent County Board of Commissioners will conduct this meeting today via electronic communications to protect the public health. Any member of the public wishing to listen to the proceedings or provide public comment may do so by using the internet connection and phone numbers and pass codes that are listed on the agenda that's posted on the screen. Closed captioning is available via internet connection. Those wishing to provide input or ask questions in advance of the meeting regarding business to come before the committee may do so by submitting the input or questions to Kent County Administrator at KentCountyMI.gov. You can also make public comment, to public comment at KentCountyMI.gov. There's a couple of ways to do that. Anyone in disrupting the meeting by using offensive language or actions may be muted, will be muted from the meeting, or removed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Wayman, so much. And we are on to item two of the meeting where we're gonna take roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Reevey.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Melton.
Present.
Morgan.
Here.
Hunstein.
Here.
Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioner Sparks.
Present.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Here.
Commissioners Talon.
Present.
Teal.
Here.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have seventeen members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to number three of invocation, and I was gonna call Commissioner Skaggs. Are you on yet, Commissioner Skaggs?
I don't see him on here yet.
No, Commissioner Skaggs. All right. Who would like to do invocation today? How about I call on our, our friend Harold Voorhees? Harold, could you do a quick invocation for us today?
Well, Mandy, today is really something special as we think of the loss of Peter Sekia. Just really, what a, what a dynamic life Peter led in serving others. I backed my first run in eighty-six. You know, he owned the Mr. Steak Restaurants in that day, and, and here I am in the Rainbow Grill with Peter Sekia, supporting my campaign, and he's been a friend through it all. And you know, to be a friend of Peter, sometimes after you talk, you can't sit down a while. But he's always been a great friend to me, a great lover of my cookies. He's just been a dandy friend, and, and what a, what a blessing to our community, the Sekia family's been. Here's a guy comes, gets, buys a small business and builds it into a, a multimillion, billion-dollar business. And, but just let's, let's give thanks to the Lord for the life of Peter and Jones Sekia. Let's praise. Heavenly Father, thank you again this morning that we can come to you through the work of your son, Jesus, and that we have direct access to bring to you, Lord, our hurts and our joys. We joy in the life of Peter and Jones Sekia. Peter was such a leader, such a, a dynamic personality. And God, we thank you for his life and for his blessing in our place. So be with the Sekia family, give them comfort and peace and knowing their dead. Live the life of great impact for, for many, many, many people around our community, our state and our nation and the world. And so we come this morning asking for your blessing upon our meeting, that we may show the spirit of love and joy and peace in all that we do. And we give you credit for this great life. We ask it all in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Harold. All right, we are on to item four, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you so much again, Harold, for those words. We are on to item five, Special Order of Business, and I will call on Dan DeLuft, our Parks Department Director, for an update.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm gonna go through about thirty slides here to give you a quick update on all the moving parts of the Parks Department that typically might not rise to your level. As you know, we are one of the oldest county parks in the system, in the state. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later as we're nearing our hundredth anniversary. Our county parks stand out by offering large regional parks with interesting land features, topography, water features. We are proud of our consistently high scores on Google reviews and also in recent master plan surveys. People really do enjoy our parks and love to be out in, out in nature. I do have to add that this photo is Wabasis Lake Park. It's one of Commissioner Jones's favorite parks, and as you know, she sits on the Parks Foundation, so I thank her for all of her hard work and promoting the parks and, you know, helping us do what we, what our mission is to do. So, next slide, please.
I apologize. I am controlling the PowerPoint remotely for Dan, and just my computer's having an issue, so if you could please bear with me for just a moment.
So the next slide will be, it's just an overview slide of kind of what we're gonna talk about this morning. You'll, when you, when it does pop up, you'll see a picture of Kaufman Golf Course and Palmer Park in the background. There we go. So it's a three hundred and thirty-four acre park that is obviously heavily used in the heart of Wyoming. Next slide, please. So for those of you who don't know, we have twenty-five full-time staff members. And you can, I'll let you read through the staff positions we have. We're kind of on a crunch time, time for, so we're, I'm gonna keep moving forward here. But we do have, we do have seventeen unionized members who are out in the field on a daily basis, who are really interacting with the public and making this all happen. So, next slide, please. So what we manage, we have forty-three parks, green spaces, and regional trails. Currently, we have seventy-three hundred, little over seventy-three hundred acres and a hundred miles of trails that we maintain and manage, seven enclosed shelters, seventeen open shelters, and many different picnic areas. We average over two thousand reservations per year, and those are all either taken online or by phone call into our office. And typically, we have Jeanette. There's one person that's handling most of that. We do have some part-time help when things get really crazy, like they did this year. So we also manage Kaufman Golf Course and Wabasis Lake Campground. The photo you see here is Alsberg Park, managed by Doug Wilber. Next slide, please. So I'll give you a little update on how COVID has changed our, changed our normal this year. What we really did learn this year was we are the place to social distance, a place for people to feel safe. Early on in March, we would look out of our office window toward the highway, and there was actually more families riding bikes, walking on the trails than there were cars on the highway. It was something I never thought I would see, but it was, it was great to see. Now, you know, more, since more people are back to work, we are more of a, a place for people just to go and hang out. We're kind of the happy hour place to be. We see a lot of people in groups of six to ten hanging out in picnic areas. They bring their BYOB and their own barbecue. And from, it's, it's almost like after-work parties are happening in our parks versus at the local establishments. Good for us, not good for them, but we'll take it, so. So a little bit about Wabasis Campground. The total number of nights camped are actually up eight percent this year, and our season was shortened, shorted by forty-nine fewer nights due to the executive order. And what we found out is people are actually staying for an entire week now, where before they were doing long weekends. So it's good to see. Kaufman Golf Course, our normal operations, we really didn't start until July first. We had expanded tee times, one person per cart. Early on, there were no carts allowed, but we really picked up after July first. We've even had a pretty good fall, so we're hoping to be about even with twenty nineteen by the end of this year. So Millennium Park, we were shortened by ten days, so you'll see the beach admission is down. That's mainly due to the fact that Memorial Day, we were not open. So that, that did hurt us, but our boat rentals are up twenty percent, concessions are up twenty percent. And this is kind of a, I mean, take it for what it's worth, but according to Google mobility data that's out there, they, there's a baseline, and then, so in April and May, visitation to Kent County parks, so that's all of Kent County. It's not just our parks that we manage. They saw a two hundred and forty-three percent increase in the number of people that are in parks, and that's based on who has their location services on, and that's how they track that. August to October, we're still up one hundred and twenty-three percent over last year. So the bad part of, of COVID is we've had to cancel over eleven hundred reservations, and those were all done by our staff, making phone calls, sending emails, following up. And, and unfortunately, dealing with a lot of people who were upset with us, even though it wasn't our, you know, we're just found that executive orders, that's something we had to do. Currently, we're down about seven hundred and eighty, so it just shows we have picked up a lot of fall reservations. We've, our staff has been very creative and reaching out to, we've done a lot of memorial services in our parks, so people can be socially distanced. We've worked with driver's ed companies where they can hold their classes in our open shelters, so the kids can be socially distanced. So we've really tried to figure out ways to keep people engaged, keep some revenue up. Just some of the, some of the ways that we've, we've handled that. It also hurt us that we couldn't have any enclosed shelters or any of the large events we normally run through Millennium Park and some of the other locations. So that has hurt our revenue. I will say that our staff has been tremendous with keeping the parks safe, cleaning protocols. As far as I know, we haven't had one super-spreader event, let's say, at, at any of our parks, so we're really proud of that. You know, our staff is on the front lines, and they've had to deal with some interesting people this year. You know, just due to COVID and the election, so it's, they've done, really done a tremendous job. So this is a Millennium Park picture from, I believe it was July of this summer, so. Next slide, please. So I'll run through some of the major projects we're working on. The first one is we just opened a new playground at Millennium Park. We replaced an existing one that was obviously twenty years old. This is a new, they call it like a ninja warrior course. It's the first structure like this in the state, so we're proud of that. And we've gotten rave reviews. Kids love it, and even here are some parents that like to go use it for their exercise as well. So I'd encourage everyone to stop out and have a little playtime out there, so. And also highlight that Two Rivers Park down near Caledonia, we current, we just opened a new playground, or I'm sorry, a parking lot. So to give public access to the site, or safe public access to the site, and we're working on developing a better trail system there as well. So, next slide, please. So this is Luton Park. It's really one of the highlights and gems in our system. If you remember, when it opened up, there was just a thirty-car parking lot off of Keys Avenue, which quickly became overran with park users, parking on the road, cut, kind of causing some issues with the neighbors. So to enhance the, the experience, we worked hard to raise some funds through the CIP process, so I thank the board for supporting us on that, and we built a parking lot. Well, when you build it, people come. It's not uncommon to go here on a weeknight and see this parking lot actually full with people hiking, mountain biking, trail running. So the next logical step to enhance the user experience was to build a restroom. So that's currently, hopefully will be done in the next couple of weeks here. They did the flatwork yesterday, fortunately. So I wish, wish we would have been able to show you that, but you'll just have to make a trip out to check it out. And so I just, yeah, again, just want to thank the board for really supporting these projects when we, when we bring them, bring them up. It really does enhance the user experience. This is one of those parks where it's a regional attraction. We've done zip code surveys before, and we're pulling people from Howland, Grand Haven, Muskegon, Mount Pleasant. The trail system isn't that good, where people will take, you know, they'll drive an hour to come to this park and, you know, ride for a few hours. So it, it's, it's a real gem in the system. Next slide, please. So Dwight Lydell, if you haven't been by, you missed seeing something really revolutionary. We basically renovated the whole entire park. What's, you can go to the next slide, please. So what started out as, how do we remove the retaining walls that were lining the creek on the right side of the screen? And that led to, how can we open it up to give access so people can get to the creek and actually see what's going on and, you know, do some frog hunting and look for turtles and things like that? So that's how the whole thing started. It led to, so opening up Mill Creek Channel. It's gonna lead to new playgrounds, a new community gathering space, which you'll see coming up, new boardwalks and overlooks for people to use. We also secured funding with a partnership with the Comstock Park DDA to offer a new pedestrian bridge between the library and the park. So we're happy about that. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation. And then we were planting over two hundred and fifty new trees in the park as well. Next slide, please. Here's a rendering of the new cabins we will be building this year, this fall. So currently, we have three cabins that are, the demand outs, outpaces the availability. So we went to the board. You guys supported adding three more cabins this year, so we'll be constructing those. And then we also have three requests for twenty twenty-one. So these are extremely popular. It's a great way to get a camping experience without the hassle of owning, you know, a sixty thousand dollar pickup truck and a sixty thousand dollar trailer. You can just show up, feel like you're camping, and leave. We take care of the rest. We also do a lot of weddings at the enclosed shelter at Wabasis, and what we're finding is people are turning their wedding celebration into a weekend instead of a, just a weekday or a weekend day. So people are staying in the cabins. They're camping. People are staying in the cabins, they're camping, the whole wedding party's doing this, the whole family's doing this. It's turning into a great family, inexpensive way to have a family wedding. So we appreciate you guys funding these. You know, your investment will. It's going to allow us to, one. You know, stop telling people, no, we don't have any availability, but two, it's going to create. Revenue for the Parks Department for the next thirty years or so, you know, depending on how long these will last, so. You go to the next slide, please. So this is the final phase in really the pioneer trail network. They paved it this week. They're working on the finishing touches in the next couple of weeks. So a big thank you to the Meyer Foundation and Kent County for really being the leader. In developing regional trails throughout Grand Rapids, Kent County, and West Michigan. We anticipate this. With this completed section, you'll safely be able to go from Grand Rapids. And take day trips out to Howland, Grand Haven, Muskegon. You can ride all the way up to Cadillac if you want. Take the Kent Trails down to Byron Center, M six over to. The Paul Henry Trail to get down to Caledonia. Head back into town for the night, enjoy some of the restaurants and breweries, and the next day plan another trip out, so. We really think it's going to be a regional attraction now that everything is connected. And we're, so we're working with the West Michigan Trails and Greenways on some universal signage. So people can find their way when they're out on the trails. And then there's a maintenance endowment that Meyer is working on. That'll be held by the GR Community Foundation for maintenance, long-term maintenance of the trails. And so, and one other thing I'll say about the trail use is there's a Strava. Strava app, and it's basically a way for cyclists and runners to track their activities. Then their data this year shows from their users. That trips are up, or the number of rides or runs that people are doing is up forty-five percent in May. This year over last year. If you've tried to purchase a new bike this year, you'll find out it's been very difficult. So people are using the trails. And I'm proud to say that we offer some of the best trails in West Michigan for people to use, and people are definitely using them. So. Next slide, please. So back to Millennium Park. This is a. A landfill that the county acquired through a tax foreclosure. And it goes back over twenty years. I haven't been intimately involved with it, but. Our department has with Brian Mulligan, he's our landscape architect. Darbas and Linda Howell have been instrumental in working with Eagle. To figure out how to get this thing closed and off of our books, so. One step in the process was building this berm on the top of the landfill. To keep, keep runoff from going down the side slopes, which will protect the cap that's over the landfill. The picture in the upper right kind of shows it from the opposite view, so you can really see there's a. Pretty extreme slope on the backside of the landfill, so that's what this cap is protecting. If you look at the picture on the upper left, you'll see a square box just above the tree line. And that is the castle in Granville, see. That's how high up this landfill is that you can see that. You can't quite see downtown, it's a little too far away. And there's some trees in the way, but. If you ever want to get a good view of the castle, you can, you can head up there and check it out, so. Next slide, please. So this is a rendering of the new office that is out to bid right now, actually. So it's kind of been a running joke in the Parks Department. That we were going to have a new office built in two thousand and three, so. We're glad to see that it was funded. We appreciate the board funding that. The trailers are working fine, but it's. It's time for them to go, so we appreciate. The board stepping up and moving us into a proper home. So we had a six-month window to work with progressive A and E services. Kind of to do the architecture and engineering. And really what, what the Parks Department was after was an inviting place for the public to come. We have a lot of people that stop in our doors to say hi, see what's going on. People just like parks, they like to talk. So we want an inviting place for them to come and just hang out. We're also. Excited that it's on this look. It will be very close to where we currently are, so we're excited about that. It's on the trails. People can get to us by car or bike or hike, which is good. And it'll also be close to our current operations building. So staff will be close by as well. Some of the highlights are using some reclaimed lumber from some of the older barns that we've acquired over the years. And then just trying to tie it in with the natural stone similar to Millennium Park. So hopefully the bids come back good in the next few weeks and we can move forward with building the project, so we're excited about it, so thank you. Next slide. So this summer, we've conducted two public master planning, master plans for Thornapple Riverbend and Wallfield Park. The process involved hiring Veritas Landscape Architects. It's a firm that specializes in doing this type of work, reaching out to the public. For public engagement. We, they, they handled all the interviews with stakeholders. Which would be township, cities, the Parks Foundation, West Michigan Sports Commission, the local county commissioner. Had some, had involvement in it, some families that sold his properties. And then we invited the public out. You can go to the next slide, please. We invited the public out to. Really just share their input on what, what they felt we should do at each, each location. So Thornapple River, the top priorities that we heard from the public. Were habitat restoration, expanding the trail systems, river access, and. People really ask for accessible trails. For baby strollers and wheelchairs, so. Next slide, please. This will give you an idea of. How people ranked what they wanted to have at the park. So it was all, it was based on dot polling at several locations throughout the park. We had several stations to get people into the park and see the park, so we offered that polling. We had. Four people on staff or at stations that were taking comments, writing down comments. Listening to what people were asking for and what they, and what people didn't want as well. And then those comments priorities were boiled down into two renderings. And we brought the public back again to another session and had them look at both of them and. Give us feedback on what they liked, what they didn't like, you know, how would they combine the two, or did they like one over the other one? So. We had a hundred and forty-seven participants, and those are just people that signed in. Pretty sure there was more people there than that who didn't, some, some people just don't want to give us their information, so. They'd show up, talk to us, and then they, then they would leave, so. So all this information is on our website as well, and if any of you would like to see it, we can, we can get that to you as well, so. Next slide, please. So this is Wallfield Park, again. The same process happened at Wallfield Park. You can go to the next slide. So you can see the high priorities, mountain biking trails, improved nature trails, habitat restoration. Accessible parking and trails. An off-leash dog park was ranked high here, and then people want to get down to the water, so. We're going to figure out a way that we can make that happen as well, so. And I, I will highlight on this, the process of this, it went, because, you know, we. We were a little bit behind schedule, but based on, you know, COVID and us not being able to. To get out in the public right away, it did put us behind a little bit, but. We were pretty happy with the process. Based on other, Veritas was conducting these in Ottawa County and the city of Grand Rapids as well. At this, this summer, and they felt our participation rate was. At, at Wallfield, it was equal to. Grand Rapids and Ottawa County. At Thornapple, it was a little bit higher, so. It was good to see. So this process moving forward, I, I really think it's a great, a great idea to do this. Lot of feedback from the public on just thanking us for allowing them to have a say in it. You know, our, our five-year master plan will be coming up in the next two years. So we will plan on following this format for that master plan as well to get, get some public input and feedback. Get the full board involved with a work session to really get some good feedback on this and use that as a document as we move forward. With some development of these undeveloped locations that we currently have, so. Next slide, please. So the Kent County Parks Foundation. It's, it's really our partner in investing in our parks. And getting the public to invest in our parks. We're always looking for ways to enhance the user experience. And the Parks Foundation allows us to. To think big, to dream big, to, let's see what else is out there. What are other people doing? What, what can we really reach for? You know, an example of this. Is this tower that's out in Denmark. It's one of the one hundred places to see in the world right now. That's, that's how they advertise it. So I'd encourage you to go to campadventure.dk. You can check it out. It's pretty amazing. But just stuff like this, you know, we're really, we're trying to think big, trying to draw people in, trying to. Bring people in from all over West Michigan and offer them some really unique. Adventures, basically, is what, you know, what we're looking for. And then we're also currently working. On a wishlist. Kind of a sales flyer that we can, the Parks Foundation can use as a sales brochure. To get people involved and engaged in our parks. Sam Morris done a great job with, you know, raising money and projects. We just, we really want to amp that up and see where we can take this over the next five years. Next slide, please. I'll quickly run through these. These have all crossed your desk several times. So you can go to the next slide. We currently have two grant applications in with the DNR Trust Fund. They're highlighted in orange on this map. One is an additional thirty-four acres to Thornapple River Green Space, and then the other property is. Located near the Eighty-Four Street Dam. It's a partnership with Caledonia Township where they will be funding twenty percent of the purchase price. The state will fund seventy percent and the county will fund ten percent. Next slide, please. So this just highlights the parcel on the left of the screen that we were hoping to acquire. Next slide, please. And this is a Thornapple Water Trail acquisition, so it's just south of the Eighty-Four Street Dam along Alaska Avenue. We hope to turn this into. A safe portage in a place for people to canoe kayak tube and then have some rental space as well. So it's a great view over the river here. There is a bald eagle's nest on site as well, which is pretty neat. So we look forward to hearing from the state this December if we receive these grants or not. Next slide, please. An update on the lower regional grant that we currently have open. We're working to acquire this one hundred and twenty-two acres. Currently, we are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of. To close, but we, we have a few grant applications in, ones with the Laurel, Laurel Area Community Foundation. And then we're reaching out. To the Grand Rapids Community Foundation as well, see what other grants are out there that we can apply for. Next slide. Chief Hazy Cloud Park. Currently. We're amending a purchase agreement for parcel A. We need to, she was given a purchase agreement. She came back with some additional items that she'd like to have in there, so we're amending that. Sending that back to her and hopefully we can get a signature here and close on parcel A by the end of this year. Parcel B, we're going through our due diligence with the state on that. We just finished up. Well, we're about to finish up some appraisal work. And that parcel, we would hope to close in Q one of twenty twenty-one next year, so. We're moving forward on those. And we're excited to, to check the box on this and get these parks opened up to the public. Next slide. Brewer Park Acquisition, if you remember back, I think it was twenty eighteen, the board approved eighty-eight thousand dollars. For us to acquire some property to gain a second access into the park. Currently, there's only one access point off Eighty-Four Street. And between the disc golf and all the soccer, it can be a congested nightmare, so. We're working with a developer. Who has a plan for the large parcel. Kind of north of the, the red rectangle I have drawn here. Where they would, they're going to purchase the whole square, but they only need. A portion of that, so they're willing to donate the rest to Kent County Parks. And that would allow us to have second access off of Division Street, so. We're excited to see where this goes, hopefully. In the next, in the next year, we can close on that and start working on plans for a second driveway. Next slide. So these are the three potential acquisitions that we're really working on at Millennium Park. Letter A, you guys will be voting on that this morning. That's kind of the gateway property for Millennium. Parcel B is a, a local excavating company and parcel C is a, a concrete mixing company. The foundation's been heavily involved in working with owners, Parks Department to really try and be creative and figure out ways that we can either move them to a new location, buy them out, a parcel of both. So we're really working on that. So, next slide, please. A quick overview of volunteer services. We got Jenny Sines. She runs this program. She's like a three-quarter time person. She's just great. Super excited about running the program, loves the volunteers. But we do a lot of trail cleanup, invasive species removal, habitat restoration, trail construction. And then she also runs the Discover event out at Hanson Nature Trails at Millennium Park. Next slide. And then we also are involved in a lot of conservation within the parks as well. We do a lot of work with school districts, local universities, John Ball Zoo, and some other municipalities. So, and this happens throughout the entire park system. This picture is Dutton Shady Side Park. This was a project with a Plaster Creek, friends of Plaster Creek, where it, it kind of opened up the creek and allowed some floodplain development and native species to be planted. Next slide. And then I just want to take a, a moment to recognize these two guys that have worked for the Parks Department longer than I've been alive, actually, which is, which is crazy. But they celebrated their 50-year anniversary working for Kent County this year. They're two of the nicest guys, hardest-working guys. They're always willing to step up and tackle any project you have. So Doug Wilber, he's the park manager at Fallsburg Park. He treats the place like it's his own yard. You know, he's paid for 40 hours a week. And I guarantee you, he's, he's thinking about the place 24 hours a day. He, he just loves, loves the park. And then Neil Oliver, he started out as a park manager. He's currently our maintenance specialist. He's the type of guy that you need something, he's going to get it for you. Something breaks, he's going to fix it. So really proud of these guys. Pretty amazing to, to work with somebody that's, you know, work with these two guys. And then, next slide. So if you, if you didn't know, in 2024, we'll be celebrating our 100th anniversary. So we're working on plans with the foundation to develop a capital campaign for acquisition and development. Gordon Park was the first park in the system, 1924. And then this open shelter at Townsend Park was the first structure that was built in the parks. So we're, we're really hoping to have a new park we can, or development of a new park that we can dedicate in 2024. And that's, that's what we're reaching towards. So I, I kind of leave you with some homework to think about and come up with some creative ways where, how we can start funding a project like that. And then next slide, which is the last slide. So I don't know if we have time for questions or not, but it might have ran over a little too long. Sorry about that.
It looks like we do have some questions. Obviously, your subject matter is really important to our board, and we really appreciate the information. I, I do wish and hope that at some point, we can get into it a little bit deeper with some sort of work session or retreat on parks, because that was a point of discussion that I know Commissioner Jones and I have had earlier in the year. And I really hope that we can do that at some point, because I think, unfortunately, it's tough to do all that in a special order of business at a board meeting. But really appreciate your information. And I think you gave a ton of great information, but probably my favorite slide was about Doug and Neil. So I'm really glad that you, you gave that, you, you highlighted those two, two men, because that's very important. And we really appreciate that. So it looks like we do have quite a few questions. We will start with Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for that great report. I also wanted to thank you for taking care of the little issue we had at one of the parks where the park met up with private property. And I appreciate you addressing that with some science very much. One question I had regarding Wallfield Park, you mentioned that we want to try to get people down closer to the water. And my only concern is, as you probably know, that's a designated trout stream. And actually, I cut my teeth fishing growing up right in that location. So from Wallfield Park all the way up through the Vogel property and everything, great little trout stream. When you, when you bring people down to the creek, will that just be a trail that gets alongside of it? Or will you be doing any type of construction or anything along the creek?
It, it will be both. People like to get over the water as well. So we, you know, we'd have a trail that would lead to some type of a boardwalk system or bridge where, so they can get over it as well.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I'm sure you're going to, your due diligence and everything will, will take into account of the trout stream designation and nothing will be done through there to take away from that natural beauty and, and the little designated pockets where the trout go up into and everything. So I appreciate that.
All right, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I also want to thank Dan. What a great report. Appreciate your engagement. I also have had engagement with you with different meetings that we've had at the parks. This is just an, an amazing system. And I am honored to sit on that Kent County Parks Foundation Board of, it's a 12-member board. We are active. We are engaged. We meet regularly. Sam Moore has been a phenomenal executive director. Very, very pleased to have him at the helm. I want to highlight the volunteers. And Dan, you brought that up. And Jenny does a great job as our Kent County Parks Volunteer Services Coordinator. I, for the first time this year, went through the process. I am now an official volunteer, whether as a group or an individual. And I'm going to be engaging that going forward, starting in 2021. I want to encourage all of us to give that some thought. You know, there's one thing to always in, in appreciate money and donations, but you can also donate time. And there are plenty of projects to touch. The last thing I wanted to say is those Luton Park restrooms are looking phenomenal. I know so many people can hardly wait for those to open. And I know that's right around the corner. But to watch the development of that park firsthand has been amazing. And kudos to you for that accomplishment. And then the last thing I want to mention is there are also memorial benches. So if you know anyone or you personally want to engage with a memorial bench, feel free to contact Dan or Sam. And that's something that's also an option. And these are smaller things to bring up, but I thought it was a good time to do it. So thanks again, Dan, and good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, my question was pertaining to, has, the results have not come yet, but the State Proposal 1 would change our Natural Resources Trust Fund. And should that change, it would relax some of the minimum requirements or some of the funding requirements versus from acquisition to renovation. I'm wondering, would that change, how, have, have we already started to think, how would that change our interaction with the NRTF? Should that pass? Are we examining, just kind of continuing our current process of acquisition and then finding other sources for, for renovation? Or will we start to pause and, and think about accessing those dollars for renovation, construction dollars and, and other things? Thank you.
So yes, you know, we, we have been involved in that, keeping track of that, the changes. So we feel it'll probably benefit us at this point, because the county has invested in acquisition over the last 10 years. So the, on the development side, currently, I believe the max is $300,000 match they'll do for development. We feel that's, you know, with some discretion, the board will be offered some discretion how they can fund things now. So the development end should go up. So that should benefit Kent County Parks when we move into a development phase on several of these parks. So we're excited about it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Well, as, as often happens, Commissioner Wooden has, has stolen my thunder, but I'll just go on with that same, same line of questioning about proposal one. So Dan, we're, we're prepared to take advantage of, of the increased flexibility that comes, you know, when and if that happens. And potentially at least a lot more money flowing from the, from the trust fund. You feel like we're ready to go by, by the next deadline?
Absolutely. Yep. We're, we've got a whole list of projects that, you know, we're ready to pull the trigger on. So we're excited about it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. This was a wonderful report. I really appreciated it, even if it was a little longer than usual. It's one that I don't think we've really heard before in this, in this depth. And you started off, and you were completely right. The parks have become the place where everybody can social distance and can exercise. And so I'm really curious as to what you're going to be doing to keep them open for our use through the winter. If there'll be, you know, restrooms open or portable restrooms, if some of the trails will be plowed so we can continue to walk, just what your plans are for the winter as we head into the long season?
So we call this our hibernation stage. But, so all of our restrooms will be closing October 31st. So none of our restrooms are heated at the current time. So we, we can't have running water in freezing temperatures. But we do have portable restrooms at all of our busiest locations for people to use. And we plow a few trails, not all trails, because, and then we groom some trails as well. So people are using our groomed trails for bat biking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, if the snow is good. So we're, even though we're, you know, officially open six months of the year, we are really a 12-months-of-the-year department where people are using our facilities year-round. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Will you be making it known what trails, you know, will be plowed for people to walk, like, you know, Millennium Park or Lawfield or, you know, where, those are two that I freak, parks that I frequent. So, you know, what, you know, what, how will you let us know where we can continue to walk outdoors and to continue to get that fresh air and exercise?
So our website will highlight, you know, come October 31st, our website will highlight our off-season locations. And there will be a guide on there as to what's groomed, what's plowed, what's, where there's portable restrooms, things like that.
Will there be a portable restroom at Millennium?
Yes, there is a portable restroom at Millennium in the off-season parking lot.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, real quick, I agree, we should have a longer work session on parks. This is awesome stuff. That would love to get into more. That being said, I don't see him listed on the participants, because I wanted to second Commissioner Vonck's motion from long ago to create a Parks Commission, because I really do think a Parks Commission, and that is taking nothing away from the Parks Foundation. They do awesome work. The foundation is a fundraising entity. I think a Parks Commission, you know, when you look at all of our boards and, and committees out there, it, it's what our parks need to take that next level. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Good morning, Dan. Thank you for the report. Just a quick question. As we continue to enhance the quality and attractiveness of all of our parks, and we really are, do we do anything to identify or to keep track of where our users come from? How many of them are Kent County residents? How many of them are outside the county and so on? I'm not sure how you would do it, but do we do anything to do that?
So really, the only way for us to track that is when people make a reservation, they need to input their address. So we can track the zip codes on our reservation side of the system. We don't have gates with user fees or entry fees, so it's hard for us to, to track it that way. But then we've also, like I said, at, you know, at Luton Park, we had just a sign-in sheet. And people, we just asked people to make a comment and write down your zip code. So we've done it that way in the past as well.
All right, any other questions for Dan on parks? Again, it was my intention to have us do a really nice park retreat and then a color tour this fall. Unfortunately, I don't feel that it, that is a, probably a safe thing to do at this point in the pandemic when we're still seeing increases in cases and hospitalizations. So we will put an end in that and for sure do something at some point as soon as we possibly can. But I appreciate your presentation, Dan. I appreciate all your hard work. We appreciate all the staff and all their hard work. It cannot be easy to maintain all those acres. And just know that it's a gem in our community and we're, we're very proud of it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. We're on to item six, public comment. Do we have any public comment today?
Don't see any messages in the inbox and no hands are raised in the chat.
Okay, great. We are on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I moved the consent agenda for today's meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Don't see any hands raised? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. Commissioner Coleman. Commissioners Milton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Hunstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Yes.
And one more time is Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, sorry, couldn't find the mute button there.
No worries. I got you. Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eight, resolutions, and we have quite a few today. So, I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees for our first motion.
All of a sudden here, I kind of lost it. What is happening with me here?
We're moving resolution 106.
Yeah, it's coming back. It's coming back. It's coming back. Madam Chair, I would like to move resolution number 106 of today's date. It's in agreement with the Kent County Office of the Defender for Indigent Defense from the Administrator's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner.
Support by Breevy.
Breevy, questions or comments on resolution 106 today? Check chat. Don't see chat. Don't see hands up. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220106, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220106 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to resolution 8B of the agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution 107 of today's date, the COVID-19 pandemic GR Chamber of Commerce fee to administer small business grants from the County Administrator's Office.
Support by Panstein.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Panstein. Questions or comments on resolution 107 today? A quick look. Don't see any hands. Oh. Sorry. Commissioner Panstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for all their work on rolling this program out. I think it's a model, not just for the state, but for the whole country. And, you know, the money we got out, and as quick as we got it out, is really helping some of these small businesses in Kent County.
Thank you, Commissioner Panstein. Any other questions or comments before we take the roll? Don't see anyone else. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220107, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220107 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great thanks to Administrator Britt. Move resolution 108, unemployment agreement for our administrator and controller.
Moved by Commissioner Coleman, support by Commissioner.
Voorhees.
Voorhees. Questions or comments on this resolution? Don't see any hands raised? Okay. I would just like to make a comment that 2020 sometimes seems like the gift that keeps on giving and sometimes not in a good way. So, to hear that Wayman was going to be leaving us again was another hit, I think, to our community and our county. But, you know, we know he has served us so well, and I'm so appreciative that he was willing to continue to serve an extended period of time to kind of get us through. And there won't be a replacement for him, but till we find someone else to do some of the roles that he's been able to do for, you know, the past 18, I think, years. So, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Is there a, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't catch who seconded that. Thank you. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220108, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220108 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8D of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of resolution 109 of today's date, which calls for the confirmation, approval, and ratification of the actions of the county administrator taken pursuant to resolution 3262028.
Support by Panstein.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Panstein. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly, since I'm recalling the resolution we passed in March, and also, you know, remembering that the resolution contains the language that terminates it once the state of emergency was terminated. Does our ability to grant such emergency powers rely on the state of emergency declaration at the state level? Or are we empowered to reintroduce another? The only reason I ask is we are at a point where hospitalizations are increasing. In fact, I could be wrong here, but I believe they're even, at least locally here in Kent County, higher than they were in the original spring. And so, I just wonder, I realize our previous resolution contained the language to terminate it at that moment. Are we enabled to reintroduce another one to ensure that we have the kind of emergency response necessary should things take a turn for the worse? Thank you.
Wayman or Linda, do you want to address that?
Yes, the board could, in fact, enact. Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but they could do that. What we've done over the last several months, I believe, is we've not had to utilize this plan. So, the feeling is that the board, as it meets regularly, we should be able to get through any types of decisions that require your approval and support. But you could do that. You could, in fact, enact on your own if you wanted to do that. Linda?
That's correct, Wayman. There is a totally different statute that gives initially the board chair and then the board the ability to declare a local state of emergency. We have used that back in 2013 for the major floods along the Grand River. And then again, more recently, for natural disasters. That allows the board chair to declare an emergency for up to seven days, and then the board as a whole to extend it beyond that if there is a local condition that the board feels is an emergency for which we need to declare that emergency and work with our emergency manager out at the sheriff's department to assist our residents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Along those lines, I noticed that the county commissioners in Adams County, Idaho, just voted unanimously to rescind all the COVID-19 restrictions out there. Is that also something that, should that opportunity come along? Is that available to us as well if we ever feel like that's something that should be on the plate?
Linda, can you respond to that, please?
Obviously, anything that this board puts in place, this board can later rescind. If it is an authority coming from the state or from the federal government, because there still is a federal state of emergency in place, we can't override those levels of government. We can obviously challenge them if the board felt compelled to say that an authority coming out of the state or the feds was not based on a constitutional provision. But just by sheer vote of this board, no, we cannot override those.
Okay. Thank you, Linda.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'm wondering if this resolution went through a standing committee or a subcommittee where it came from?
Linda, you want to speak about that?
It did not go through a standing committee, in part because the original resolution came straight to the board. This is pursuant to the March resolution. The March resolution required the executive committee to look at things every 60 days. It did do that. And then it also allowed the full board to rescind the March resolution upon its own motion and vote. This is actually a confirmation-type resolution because the way the Supreme Court issued their opinion, they said that the governor's executive orders were void back in April. Our original March resolution had some automatic language in it that said it terminated when the executive orders terminated. This is primarily just to confirm that everything that was done subsequent to that April 30th date, it has been looked at by this board in its regular process, being the executive committee and then other things that were actually funneled through the board, and that we don't have any questions about what happened in those intervening months.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't see any other questions or comments on this resolution. No, their hands are raised. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220109, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220109 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to resolution 8E, and I will again call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of resolution 110 of today's date, which comes to us from the COVID Cares Relief Subcommittee, calling for the allocation of certain cares funding as indicated in the resolution.
Support by Panstein.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Panstein. Questions or comments on resolution 110 today? Don't see any hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220110, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Yep. Commissioners Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220110 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8F, and I will call on Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 111 of today's date, the 2020 apportionment report. That is meticulous, detailed, accurate, and awesomely put together by Matthew Woolford and his fantastic team.
Moved by Commissioner Volkowski, support by Commissioner.
Support by Breevy.
Breevy. Questions or comments on this resolution? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102220111, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. Commissioner Coleman.
Sorry, yes.
Commissioners Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Panstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioners Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 a's, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102220111 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the day, and I will call in Commissioner Voorhees again.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to introduce, to move, resolution 112 of today's date. And after I do so, I would have a question for the fine work of Mr. DeLuft. But I would move the resolution from Millennium Park land acquisition from the Parks Department.
Support by Panstein.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Panstein. It looks like we do have a question. Commissioner Skaggs.
During the Chief Hazy Cloud discussion, we talked about trying to make sure that we were aware of who we were purchasing this land from, and I just have a question about who's the seller for us here?
Dan, you want to speak to that, please? All right, I'll tell you.
I can speak to that. We're actually buying this parcel from the Parks Foundation.
Okay, great. Just want to be aware of that since this is a transfer of money, and again, that would be something that would be wonderful to see on the future information on this.
Yeah, moving forward, we will add those to the ARs.
Great, thanks, Dan.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. My understanding from the presentation earlier is that there were three parcels that were being considered along there, and this one, I think, is the residential that's just on the corner. Is this the parcel that would be necessary to complete the entrance plan that we're talking about, or do we need the other parcels as well?
Correct. This would be the gateway parcel.
So the others involving the cement facility, and I think there's a sand entity still in there. Those are to be pursued at a later date.
Well, we're pursuing them now, but it'll be a later date before we can acquire them or move them, yes.
Successfully pursued, yes.
Correct.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just want to mention again that this park was a dream and a vision of Ambassador Sekia, and it's great to see that even now that he has passed, that the vision is continuing, and this is a park, along with our whole park system, of something that we can be extremely proud of. A lot of these parks started with visions. They were funded by community leaders, family trust, and just the kindness of the business community for all that Kent County has given them. They are giving back tenfold. So I just want to make that note that we've got a strong public-private partnership all through all sectors of the county and county government, and that's one thing that makes Kent County stand out.
Commissioner Voorhees, did you have a question as well?
Yes, I did, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Steck pretty much brought it to life. So this is the farthest west property that comes along the road there. So I was thinking this is one or two back from the exact corner, but this is the corner of the two roads right there. Can't they come?
Maynard and Butterworth.
Yes, that is true, then. This is the corner lot.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions on Resolution 112 today? Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, I was a tad confused when it came to the seller, because I checked the parcel numbers in this, as we discussed in the Finance Committee. Ownership is public record, and I checked prior to the Finance and then checked prior to this meeting, and the parcel number suggests it's owned by a household, because they took the principal residency exemption. I'm just a little confused how we're saying that we're acquiring this from the Parks Foundation. Could that be clarified for me, please?
Dan, you want to clarify, please? I know the answer, but please, go ahead.
So the seller, we've been dealing with the seller for quite a while, and in the process of the Parks Department working through the state DNR Trust Fund Grant, the seller was really hoping to expedite the process. So the foundation stepped up. So they're actually closing on that in the next week or so, and then we will be purchasing it from them once we have everything lined up with the trust fund grant.
Gotcha. That's very helpful. Thank you for that, and if anything, I think that helps, at least to me, show it might be valuable in our action requests to describe even the acquisition process, because as we know, sometimes they're a little bit different, and sometimes people want to close a little sooner. So that was all really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on 112 before we proceed with the roll call? We don't see any other hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 10222112, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman. Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Got you. Commissioners Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Vonck. Commissioner Vonck. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 10222112 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to number nine on our agenda, and it's public comment related to general county matters. Wondering if there's anyone today who would like to speak on that or in the email? Looks like we have a member of the public, Kevin Ray. Am I pronouncing that right, Kevin?
Ray, yes.
Okay.
My concern is what appears to me to be a faulty view of new case data being published by the Health Department, which is, I'm concerned, is leading to possibly some erroneous decisions being made there about various matters regarding COVID-19. Is it possible for me to share my screens so I can show you what I'm talking about?
I don't know if you had sent that to staff prior to this or not?
I've been actually in contact with a couple of people at the Health Department who had responded to these concerns earlier and had indicated they would forward this to Dr. London. However, never really got any feedback from them after that point, and I haven't really seen any change in the way data is being presented on the county's website, and also affecting comments and things by members of the Health Department in the media, which are very erroneous comments being made based on this erroneous data.
Does that conclude your comments today?
Well, is there, I guess, what is the recourse here to get this addressed, I guess? Is there some?
Madam Chair, he can forward that information to me, the Administrator. I will follow up with him and the Health Department, if you would like.
Yeah, Kevin, we typically don't do a back and forth in public comment. It's in our rules, I believe, but we really appreciate you bringing this forward to us. Please forward that to our Administrator, Wayman Britt, and then he can distribute that, or you can also, all of our emails are online. You can email us directly as well. But we are happy to take your information and glad you could join us today.
You can also reach me at 616-632-7577. 632-7577.
Okay. Is there an email address I can send to, anything?
Sure, why don't you call me, and I'll make sure I send that to you.
Okay. And your name was, I'm sorry?
Wayman Britt.
Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Any other public comment today? Let's see, any other hands raised?
No other hands are raised.
Okay. Also, I don't know, Kevin, if you are still online, but we do have an email for public comment, which is publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov, and you can always send that there as well. All right, we are moving on to Item 10 of our agenda, reports. Commissioner reports today, official reports. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Want to share a few highlights from last week's Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority meeting. First of all, as part of ongoing efforts to make downtown a year-round destination, the DDA approved funding for three winter art installations that I hope everyone will be able to get downtown this winter to see, in addition to all of the normal holiday decor that happens. It's pretty fun. Second, we approved additional support for social zones, and particularly for winterization projects, so things like gas heaters and shelter-type enclosures, really trying to extend what was a pretty successful expansion of space for downtown retail businesses, particularly restaurants and bars. So hopefully, we'll be able to hang out there in a safe area outdoors with some additional heat and extend the season for that activity. Third was approval of funding for work on the Grand River's edge, on the west side of the river, near Pearl Street, near the Grand River's Public Museum. That work should be happening soon and is being done in conjunction with plans for additional improvements in Anabawen Park, right adjacent to it. And then finally, and this is a real finally, I've been on the DDA for 12 years, and I think every year, we've talked about a redesign and rebuilding of Lion Square as a downtown destination. That's that area between the DeVos Place parking ramp and the Amway Hotel downtown. And that looks like it may be finally happening. We've had a number of iterations of designs, and it looks like that's actually going to start happening with bids going out in February and construction starting in the spring. It's a pretty exciting project along the river there, and will be part of one of the key projects in the restoration of the Grand River that continues to move forward. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Talon, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So yesterday morning, the Pension Board met in person. I was joined by Commissioner Lindsay Keel. Appreciate her hard work on trying to get caught up and educated on what pension funds are all about. Yesterday, we kind of had just had one of our two workshop meetings, about a couple hours, and we use those for more educational purposes, looking at different strategies and what's on the future. And we kind of looked at, once again, at the long-short asset class strategy. It's not the first time that that's been brought before the Pension Board. It's always been kind of a lukewarm reception. It involves hedging, selling long and short. I think a lot of people are concerned with the cost and the transparency of the hedge funds that operate some of these things over the past few years. But then we've talked about it, though, that the transparency is getting a little more transparent, and the fees are getting a little bit better structured for pensions. I don't think we're there yet to add that to the strategy. The strategy that we have has worked long before I joined the Pension Board, and if we keep it, will serve us well going into the future. We have a great mix of equity, which includes large and small caps, international markets, as well as emerging markets. We have fixed income, which include core bonds, fixed income, along with real assets, which include infrastructure investments and real estate. 2020, like everything else, everything was affected by the COVID state shutdowns, the shutdowns of businesses. So, yeah, we took a big hit. We went down in market value probably about $806 million from the $930 that we were at at the start of the year. I think this points out the big difference between actively managed pension system that stays the course, has a plan, versus the public that reacts with emotion and sells off in these downturns. We didn't do that. We put a lot of faith and trust in the plan that was developed before and the one we still have. And it was good to hear at the meeting yesterday that our market value is back up to $930 million in this short period of time. That still is a return of about flat, but if you would have told me a year ago that all the things that happened were going to happen, and that our pension fund could hold firm where it's at and not lose any money, states a lot about the management team that we've got that oversees it, and our staff, and human resources. Michelle Belkin and her staff do an incredible job keeping us informed and keeping the plan on track. It's also a testament that when we do that, we're sending a message to those that are paying into the pension system or those that are collecting from the pension that is a safe pension. It's one that's looked up to. It's one of the very few in the state that can actually say they're fully funded. A lot of the return that we've got is being led by tech and large caps companies, and we're well positioned in those parts of our portfolio. So I just want to give you a brief update on that. The only, I think, sad news that I heard at the meeting yesterday is that our longtime chair, who was the chair of the Pension Board when I came on, Bill Walker, has announced after 10 years of service on the Pension Board that he's going to step down and pursue other interests. So I just wanted to thank Bill for his 10 years of service, his 10 years of leadership, and the time he took away from his business to serve the Kent County residents on this board. So thanks for the time, Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. A couple of items to report on. First, on Monday, the Senior Milage Allocation Committee wrapped up its fall sessions and completed its determination on allocation recommendations, which will be coming back to the board here over the course of the next month or so. This was the first time in our new format that we designed earlier in the year, and I think all of us that went through it thought it went well. My thanks to my colleagues, Commissioners Hennessy and Commissioner Coleman, for their hard work. I think this is also the first time, I recall, where we had 100% attendance at every session and the length of the session. And of course, thanks to our contract administrator, AAA, for their hard work in assisting us and getting us through that. Secondly, just briefly on LHR Regional Entity, we are, I think, for the first time in a while, now fully staffed on our board with the appointment of one more board member from Kent County. So we are now fully functioning, at least as a board. At the same time, we are now in a CEO search process for a new CEO at the LHR Regional Entity. And then finally, just an update from LHR. We are in the process now proceeding with the interviews. The teams have been assigned for interviewing. We are actively scheduling those interviews for appointment recommendations, and would intend to have those recommendations to the LHR later in first part of December and to the full board soon thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck, for all your work on that. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just wanted to update you on TPW. So this past week, Darbas and I met with members of the Sustainable Business Park Advisory Committee, and those are members from representing Allegan County Board of Commissioners and Door Township. And we have nine responses to the RFP that was sent out for people that are, or companies that are interested in being part of the Sustainable Business Park. So that's exciting. And so the committee is reviewing those responses right now, and it'll probably take a couple months to go through it, to verify all the information, to go through their plans, and it's really interesting. We also have Rick Chapla, formerly from The Right Place, that's assisting us on this project. And there's a huge mix of responses, lots of public-private partnership opportunities, too. So as we go through this process and determine which candidates are going to be the best for the business park, I'll keep you guys updated. But it's moving along, and we're hoping to have an answer in the next couple months. So, thanks.
For all your work on that, Commissioner Breevy, really important work. Any other official reports today? We don't see any other hands.
I don't see any other hands. I have two official reports. I first want to welcome everyone, welcome Jenny James to our board. She is sitting next to Wayman. I don't know if you can see her screen or not, but she is our new deputy administrator, and I wanted to welcome her. Wish we could all be in person, wish we could see you in person, but typically, just so you know, Jenny, our special order of businesses don't go that long normally. But we welcome you. We're glad you're here, and also wanted to make a comment that I am appointing her to the Viva Board to replace Matthew Van Zetten. So that's my official report there, and welcome. Secondly, I did email the board, and we did make an official statement, but we do have an administrator search committee that was launched, and we anticipate meeting hopefully yet this month. But we will be holding those pursuant to our rules in an open meeting format, most likely virtual for now, but we are hoping to kick that off, and I hope that you all will review the release that went out and the email that went out. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. I hope you can, I'll participate when possible, but we do have a big heavy lift there after the cares committee. Now, we have this, we're transitioning right into this, and we have big shoes to fill. So that is my official report. We're going to move on to item 11 of our agenda, Commissioner miscellaneous. Do I have any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on a personal level, had a couple tough losses yesterday. And the first was Ambassador Sekia. I know we talked about him, but you can't talk about him enough because he did so much for West Michigan. And at a personal level, I remember contacting him about four years ago to see if he would like to get involved in our efforts to help local veterans, and of course, he came on right away, and he was a proud Marine. Not everybody knew that, but he always reminded me every year when I called him back. And he never asked for any fanfare about his donation he gave us. He just said he's glad to do it. He said, keep up the good work. I really respected that, and I also respected the fact that as he was getting to his last days, we all kind of could see it coming. We heard bits and pieces, but he tried to get as much done as he could in those last, you know, weeks and months. And I remember the trip he took us out to Millennium Park. I remember watching him, how passionate he was to make sure that we understood what that was all about. And you kind of had the sense that he wanted to kind of tattoo that on our brains because I think he knew some things that we didn't know. So that was really important. I also just wanted to acknowledge, my brother-in-law, Ron, passed away yesterday, and Ron, unlike Ambassador Sekia, was a pretty quiet man, but he had an incredible passion for his neighbors and his family, his kids. He loved us all unconditionally. He was just a great Christian man, and I just wanted to mention him because he meant so much to us, and he was more like a brother than brother-in-law, but we do have, you know, a lot of reinsurance knowing that he is with his Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, right now. So I just wanted to mention him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I also just wanted to acknowledge Peter Sekia. He definitely did a lot for our community, and we can, you know, see it, you know, in names of buildings and different activities that he participated in. But, you know, I do think he was the ultimate partner in public-private partnerships. You know, he gave, but he also expected, you know, local governments to give, too. And I just think of the contributions that the county has been able to make to the county park system. You know, in my mind, Millennium Park was something that was, you know, in his heart and he loved and was proud of. So I think, you know, being able to honor his commitment to Millennium Park today was pretty cool to be able to purchase that property. And, you know, I just think we should continue on and, you know, find ways that we, you know, ourselves can support our community and, you know, continue on his tradition of giving. So I appreciate him, and the Sekia family is in our prayers.
Thank you, Commissioner Breevy. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. On a different note, and I think on a very happy note, which is, in my opinion, good news these days, is not something we always hear. We had some very exciting things happening in Kentwood. We actually have a senior from the Kentwood High School. Her name is Taylor Kyle, and she is opening up her own business, believe it or not, at this particular time of what we're going through in the county and in the state and country. It's called the East Town Cereal Cafe, and she was featured in the MLive, Grand Rapids Press. So I hope that you will take note of that. She's 17 years old, and certainly at 17, I can tell you without a doubt, I was not starting up my own company. I think I was still, I'm not sure what I was thinking about at 17, but it was not advancing myself as an entrepreneur. The second thing is Lee Tran, who is the art teacher in Kentwood and has just opened up numerous, numerous windows and doors and pathways for persons who maybe are not as excited about the academic part of school, but just all the arts that they have to offer. And she was named the Michigan Arts Education Association for 2020 and the 2020 overall Michigan Arts Education Association Art Educator of the Year, which is just very, very exciting and certainly well-deserved. She gives and gives and gives. And the third thing, actually, there were more, but the third thing is the principal from Brookwood, Lorenzo Bradshaw, received the 2020 NAACP Role Model Education Award. And he is quite a force in Kentwood and certainly brings great energy and leadership and guidance to not only the whole Kentwood school system, but certainly the Brookwood Bobcats, they're called. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Melton. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to first, you know, again, well, express my condolences to the Sekia family as well. As would be no surprise, the ambassador and I did not necessarily share political philosophy, but we shared many a laugh. And because I have nothing but conflicts of interest, I have a conflict of interest because he and Joan were contributors to disability advocates. So he knew many good causes. And then, as I noted on Tuesday, you know, here's my untechnical, but Pam sent along the flyer concerning a pilot program that we've started with West Michigan Veteran Services and a new mobility call, our new mobility company called Phoenix Mobility Rising on providing mobility options for veterans and their families. So check out that flyer, pass it along, share it, like it on Facebook and all that rot to help people get where they need to be. Thanks.
Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Often I've said that Kent County's got a great story to tell, and we've got to tell it. And the one thing I appreciated about Ambassador Sekia is he told that story wherever he was, whether it was in Italy, anywhere in the United States, talking with foreign leaders. And he was proud of this area, proud of what West Michigan was and what we've become. And, you know, we're going to be thankful many decades ahead of us of all the work and the vision and the people he got together to make Kent County and West Michigan, the pride and joy that he wanted it to be. So Ambassador Sekia, rest in peace, and wherever you are, Sparty on.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous comments today before I conclude? I don't see any hands raised. I know we've had a long meeting today. I do want to make a couple comments about Peter. Try to get through it. We certainly can memorialize him like we should today in these next couple, you know, with a day notice, but I just want to share a couple stories. You know, obviously, he helped launch the Parks Foundation, which is an immeasurable gem to this community. A lot of people don't know that the airport is named the Juggler Ford International Airport because of Peter Sekia, and we had to fight with Palm Springs, which, who would ever want to get in a fight with Peter Sekia? Clearly, he came out on top to get that name and to keep that name. And so I just wanted to share that with a lot of members that don't know that. A lot of people don't know, you know, we know about all the projects he's done with his name on it and the statues and the greening initiatives, but some people don't know that he would load up hundreds of inner-city kids and expose them and take them to a MSU game and expose them to that, expose them to higher education. He would take them to Lake Michigan so that they could see that beautiful resource that we have at the state when there's kids that don't even get to leave the city limits. And a story that one of my good friends shared with me yesterday was he was at a political rally, and he was in the back waiting for the vice president to come greet him, and there was someone there as well waiting to greet the vice president, who was a paraplegic. And she was there, and she said to Peter, you don't know me, but I know you, and you made a huge difference in my life. And she had gotten in a car accident, and he had read about it in the paper, and he sent her a donation, just unsolicited, to help her get through it. And he's done that hundreds of times, and people don't even know about it because he doesn't want people to know about it, and I'm sharing it. But I just wanted to share that, and I hope we all find solace in the fact that he's launched and mentored and encouraged and inspired hundreds of leaders in this community, including myself, to really give back to this community and all that we can and make sure it continues to be the center of the universe that he thought it was. And so I just wanted to share those stories. I'm sorry that it took a little longer, but with that, I will call on Commissioner Skaggs for a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everyone, for their kind words. I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, November 5th at 6:00 PM.
Move by Commissioner Skaggs. Support by?
Bolkowski.
Commissioner Bolkowski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn until November 5th after the election. Hallelujah. See you all then.